All right. Good morning, everyone. I'm going to call to order this meeting of the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. It's October 7th, 2020. And we will begin with our, I will note first that all three of us are present. Commissioner Jones, Commissioner Giffens, and myself, Julie Thomas. And we'll begin with the public statement read by Commissioner Jones.
We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people, regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we have the right. And, and we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear. And we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We also stand in support of our county public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC.
Great. Thank you so much. Our next item is departmental updates. And we'll begin with Ms. Cottle at the Health Department. Good morning.
Good morning. Happy fall and looks great outside there. When I, when I see that picture, that looks great. The dashboard for those people who are paying attention and looking at the state map and dashboard every day. Wednesday is when the metric map changes and we will most likely remain in yellow today. Think we are just on that cusp of blue and yellow, but I do think that we will remain in yellow this week. So the numbers are improving. That's the, the thing that I would say is most important is that our daily number of positives right now is hovering in that 23 to 25 per day range. And so it's not going up and it's kind of stable right now and dropping. So that's, that's good news and we, we want to look at those things and follow them. But that's not the only thing that we look at. And so I will just remind everyone that we look at our positivity rate and all that different information that's on that dashboard. But we also look at the capacity of our hospital. We look at flu activity. And over the summer, there's certainly much less flu activity that goes on. So we don't pay maybe quite as much attention to that just because there isn't as much flu circulating. But we are coming into flu season and so that will be even more important to pay attention to in the coming weeks and months. We look at testing and our contact tracing abilities and how those things are working. And with that, we look at other pockets, just how are we doing in general? And we look at other new information that may be made available to us. So it's pulling all of that information together that will help, help us move through and continue to make decisions as we go forward. We are planning for fall flu clinics. Our nurses have lots of school clinics planned. There's lots of community clinics set up. IU Health around their region has a variety of clinics set up for flu vaccine. And we are working on some plans as well. And we're working on spring plans for COVID-19 vaccination clinics. So we're busy in the planning mode, putting all of those things together. And then I will say that in this world of acronyms, we probably don't want a new one, but I have one for you. And it's kind of a guide to smashing the spread of COVID-19 and that acronym is SMASH. So social distancing, remember that six feet of distance that we need between us in order to maintain some safety from spread. We need to continue wearing our masks. Masks are very important and we need to continue to wear those when we are around other people out in public that are not part of our home unit. And especially when we can't maintain that six feet distance. The A, we need to avoid crowds. And again, crowds, mask up if you're in a crowd. Avoid crowds outside, but especially inside and among people that aren't part of your, your typical group. Stay home when you're sick. And when I say sick, I don't just mean symptomatic. But if you test positive for COVID-19, you are sick and you need to stay home. So symptomatic or asymptomatic, isolated home for those 10 days. And honestly, if you are sick with something else, stay home too, because we don't want influenza circulating or other respiratory infections either. And then hand washing. So maintain good hand washing skills as well. So we want to kind of follow that SMASH guidelines. It's all the same things we've been talking about. It's really nothing new, but just a new way to talk about it, I suppose. And with that, I will end with going back to what we hear a lot about Halloween. And we've said, follow CDC guidance in terms of holiday gatherings and Halloween. But I do want to just share a couple of things with you about that because we're getting questions. I want to plan a trunk or treat, or we normally have a trunk or treat. How can we do that? So the list of activities that are considered higher risk activities are participating in traditional trick or treating where treats are handed to children who go door to door, or they dig their hands into that candy dish going door to door. Trunk or treats where treats are handed out from trunks of cars lined up in parking lots. Attending crowded costume parties that are held indoors. Going to an indoor haunted house where people may be crowded and screaming. Going on hay rides or tractor rides with people who are not in your household. All of those things are considered higher risk activities. That doesn't mean that you can't do some of those things. It just means that we need to do them differently. And there are some good suggestions that are available for people. One, remember, we do have a mask mandate in, in order. But look at the guidelines around wearing masks for Halloween. You do need that cloth mask. Not, don't rely on your traditional Halloween mask that you might wear. And it's not advised to kind of double up on those because of potential breathing problems. But incorporate that mask into your costume. That's always fun anyway. So look at doing that. Instead of, if you're doing a trunk or treat, instead of having people again go in and grab candy, maybe you set that out on a table alongside your car. Make sure that those cars are distanced well, at least 15 feet, so that you can keep that crowd small and distanced as well. So that you have someone who's monitoring people and making sure that they're not congregating. Keep things clean and sanitized. Communicate well so that people know what's expected of them at your event. Those kinds of things. Again, clean, high-touch surfaces frequently. Maybe you pick a bigger parking lot than you would normally. Or maybe you, instead of opening something up to the whole community, it's a smaller, smaller group that you're accommodating and there are more people that do those things. So again, I will just say that we can still enjoy social gatherings, the holidays. We can still have fun at Halloween, but we just need to do it a little differently this year and keep safety in mind. You know, four years, we've had to, to make changes and adapt at Halloween and we will continue to do that. So we just want people to have a fun, yet safe Halloween and, and holiday season.
Great. Thank you so much, Ms. Cottle. Comments or questions, Commissioner Jones?
Not right now.
Commissioner Giffens?
No, it would be nice if we could share all those things in writing.
Sure.
They're excellent.
We could, we could put a link on our website to the CDC guidelines. They're, they're pretty, pretty explicit and very clear. And they do recommend things like instead of handing out candy to actually put it in separate bags, but to make sure you wash your hands before you create those little treat bags and things for kids. So really good guidance there on that website. Excellent. Thank you so much, Ms. Cottle.
Thank you.
All right. Next we turn to Ms. Allison Moore, Emergency Management. What do you have for us today?
Good morning. I'd like to just start with Halloween and piggyback on what Ms. Cottle had shared with us and let you know that we have several fire departments that are going to be handing out candy that have assured us that they will be following those CDC guidelines. So I'm going to run through that list really quick. And currently Kate, our Deputy Director for Emergency Management is putting that CDC link up as well as these fire departments and their addresses right now as we speak. They are Benton Township Station 14, Northern Monroe Fire Station 25, Monroe Fire Protection Station 21, 22, and 23, and then Van Buren Fire Station 29 and 39. Bean Blossom is also having an event, not on Halloween night, where they are having a community event. So they will be participating in community fun and following CDC guidelines at, at another event. So many of our departments are, are helping our public out and making some, some fun choices during COVID times. So we thank them and we will have that up on our website soon. I'd also like to announce that, I know I've announced last week, we have a day and an evening blood drive for October. And if both of those are successful, we will shoot for two in November and two in December. I did announce on Friday's press call and I wanted to share it on the commissioner's call as well in case there's individuals that were not on Friday's call, that we have collected 276 units of blood at our Monroe Board of Commissioners' blood drives, which could potentially have saved 828 lives. And so we now have a goal of trying to save 1,000 lives in the 2020 year from the beginning of COVID until the end of 2020. So I challenge you, if you can, to make an appointment at the redcross.org website for our two October blood drives, if possible. They are scheduled for October 22nd from 10 until 3, and October 28th from 2 until 7. And I will put those, those dates in our chat as soon as I am done with this announcement. And again, we do have some dates scheduled for November and December, but let's see how October goes. And if we get these filled, then we will keep moving. And I'll make those announcements as we get closer to the end of the year and hopefully we'll meet those goals. We've currently been trying to play catch up with some of the Indiana Department of Homeland Security Assessment requirements. They placed many of our duties on hold during COVID, but they are duties that still needed to be conducted and implemented. So these last couple of weeks, we've done a NIMS compliance survey. We've done our annual inventory review. And we are starting a THIRA assessment, which is a threat hazard risk assessment. And infectious disease will be highly included in that assessment this year. It will be something that will be much more of a priority than some of the other areas that we look at and review. So it's quite different, which has its own little challenges. But we've been quite busy in our office doing several different duties and trying to play catch up. So we are, are glad that we've been checking some things off. So that's all I have.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Ms. Moore. And see if there are comments or questions for Commissioner Jones? Commissioner Giffens?
No, just remind people that they have to wait 56 days between donating blood.
Right. Thank you. Thank you so much, Ms. Moore. We appreciate your hard work. I know you're, you and Kate have been helping out at the Health Department. So we appreciate all the extra work that you've done throughout this whole time. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And with that, we will turn to Ms. Ridge for a road, traffic, construction, et cetera, update. All things roads and bridges.
I don't think mine's as exciting as theirs, but, so yeah, we are still in paving season. We finished up Duncan Road this week and we are actually going to do the remainder of Red Hill Road, which is Walker Lane to Dutch Church Thursday and Friday and into the first of next week. And then we'll be doing Walker Lane from Jenner Drive to just before Steinsville City Limits. So I'm busy. So yeah, here we are in October. So the guys have done a great job on catching up since we lost three months basically of paving due to the COVID. But I think they've gotten just as much done as if we were, we didn't experience that pandemic due to their hard work. So a big thanks to the big, to the crews out there for continuously working.
Absolutely. Thank you. Comments, questions, Commissioner Jones?
No.
Commissioner Giffens?
No, great work though.
Absolutely. And we will see you later on in the agenda. Thank you so much, Ms. Ridge. Appreciate you and the crews. All right. Are there any other department updates to be offered? Let's see, any? Okay. So with that, let's turn to public comment. And this is for items that are not on our agenda. And you have three minutes total time. At 2 minutes 30 seconds, you will hear a tone. Ms. Dayton, if you're there, if you could share that tone? Excellent. You will hear that tone. When you hear that, you have 30 seconds remaining to speak. So let's open this up for public comment, again, for items not on our agenda. Is there anyone here that wishes to offer public comment? Go down to participants and raise your hand, if you would please.
All right. First up, we have Tron and Wright Randolph.
Right. Excellent. Thank you. That's our surveyor, Tron and Wright Randolph. Sir?
Yes, hi. I would have been a little more prepared and put this on the agenda, but we were a little behind schedule. So I just wanted to let everyone know with, working with the voter registration, we had updated our interactive map, which is linked on voter registration or on the GIS page on the county website. It's an interactive map where you can kind of zoom in and out. And we've updated all the polling locations as well. So you can find your polling location. It also has early voting. So you know, you can find where early voting is. It has the list of all early voting times and everything. Also, we updated our PDF maps. So there are PDF maps that are linked on voter registration as well. And they have the current voting, polling places. That's pretty much the only thing that changes. And just wanted to let everyone know, I do think before early voting, I will come and kind of just demo that so the public can see how that map is interactive and how they can zoom in and out. Today, I'm going to be trying to roll out more of a mobile application. I guess I forget occasionally that I'm always looking at this at a desktop. The other day I opened it on my phone and it just squeezes all the information together. So I hope to roll that out here today or this week. But I wanted to encourage everyone, go to Monroe County Voter Precinct Interactive Map, which is on voter registration or on the GIS Division page. And you can get all of this information in one area. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. Comments or questions, Commissioner Jones?
Thank you for doing this. This math is really very, very helpful. And it's worth just taking a look at it, even if you know right where you're going to vote.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, just echo what Commissioner Jones said, especially with them changing where the voters and the voting locations are. So it's big help. Thank you.
Right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. and Wright Randolph. Appreciate you and your staff. Is there anyone else that wishes to offer comments on an item not on our agenda?
Are no more hands raised?
Okay. Thank you so much, Ms. Dayton. We appreciate you. And with that, we will move on to our next agenda item.
Move to approve the minutes for September 30th, 2020.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Any edits, comments, corrections? Okay. All right. And I saw enough of the meeting after the fact that I feel confident in voting. So with that, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on approval of minutes September 30th, 2020?
Yes, Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Right. And I'd like to take a moment and thank my colleagues for covering the meeting. I tried to take some time off. I was somewhat successful, but it was really helpful for me. So thank you both for that. And we'll move on to the next item, please.
Move approval of the claim stock it accounts payable October 7th, 2020 and payroll October 9th, 2020.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and we have a second. Mr. Miller, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. The total for claims was $660,870.70. There were two items really that were worth noting, the first of which was Riverboat Revenue Sharing Distribution. Again, that's the distribution of Riverboat Revenue Funds. And that was in the amount of $270,728.95. The other item was WSP USA Inc. in the amount of $59,839.11. And that was to design the roundabout Smith Pike, Curry Pike, and Woodyard Road. As far as payroll is concerned, the total was $1,564,053.3. $1,104,878.13 were for the main supplemental and incentive payrolls. And the remaining $459,174.90 were for the payroll-related AP claim items like taxes and per.
Great. Thank you so much. Comments or questions, Commissioner Jones?
No, not right now.
Commissioner Giffens?
No, thank you.
Is there any public comment on this item? Again, go to participants and raise your blue hand.
There are no hands raised.
Thank you, Ms. Dayton. With that, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on the approval of the claim stock it accounts payable October 7th and payroll October 9th, 2020?
Yes, Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. And we'll move on to, oh, I will note that we have received a report from the Clerk of the Circuit Court for August of 2020. And then we will move on to new business.
Move to approve Voca Grant Agreement. Fund name, Voca Grant. Fund number 8121-9622 in the amount of $132,933.31.
Second.
We have a motion and a second and we have Ms. Hamlin standing by. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is a request, as I come every year or two, for signature and approval of our Voca Grant Agreement. I want to point out that this Voca Grant, we wrote for and received funding for an additional VA position, victim assistant position. So this grant amount is a little higher than it has been in years past. This is a two-year grant agreement, so it runs from 10/1 of '20 through 9/30 of 2022. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you so much, Ms. Hamlin. Comments or questions, Commissioner Jones?
Just that this is an awfully important grant that we get and Prosecutor's Office really does great work with this.
Thank you.
Commissioner Giffens?
I'm not sure shocked is the right word, but I was truly amazed at the number of victims that your office works with every single year. Kudos. I'm sure it makes a difference in people's lives.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's a huge caseload and some of the crimes are very serious and that takes more time and more intensive training. And yeah, we, we really appreciate the fact that we have this service offered to our residents who are the unfortunate victims of crime and help them move forward. Excellent. Thank you for bringing this forward. And with that, let's see if there is any public comment on this item. Again, go to participants and raise your hand to let us know.
There are no hands raised.
Thank you, Ms. Dayton. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on the Voca Grant Agreement?
Yes, Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Hamlin. All right. Next item, please.
Move to approve ratification of Underwood Construction, Inc. Agreement. Fund name, Juvenile Perdiem. Fund number 4903 in the amount of $22,750.
Second.
Great. We have a motion and a second and we have Mr. Cockrell here to offer us some information.
Yes, as we, as you are well aware, we have done a lot of work at the YSB facility, making a tremendous expansion to it. Part of that expansion included a walking trail for de-escalation for, for use when they needed it. The solution that was part of that was getting washed out and not working. We've worked with that vendor and I think we'll see a change order in the coming weeks. But this is to put a, basically to do a better fix for that de-escalation path. Because it was being washed out and it really needs to be not washed out and smooth.
All right. Comments or questions, Commissioner Jones?
I just think it's a great idea to have a de-escalation path and I'm glad we're going to be getting it in shape.
Comments, questions, Commissioner Giffens?
No, I mean, there's all kinds of research that indicates physical activity is as good as any kind of medication for all kinds of situations. And so, yeah, keep it going.
Yeah. I will say, pre-COVID, when I went out to look at the construction that was happening, I actually used the de-escalation path and it kind of worked. So I can testify to its effectiveness. All right. With that, let's see if there are any, any, is there any public comment on this item? And again, go to participants and raise your hand.
There are no hands raised.
Okay. Thank you so much. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on the ratification of Underwood Construction, Inc. Agreement?
Yes, Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Next item, please.
Move to approve amended agreement with Davy Research Resource Group. Fund name, Community and Urban Forestry. Fund number 8129 in the amount of $20,000.
That will be us. This is a.
I'm sorry. Wait, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Oh, second. Sorry.
Here we go. Believe in us hanging. Now, now we're ready for you, Ms. Whitmer. Thank you. Thanks for standing by.
On July 29th, you signed the original contract, but Davy Resource would like added some wording to paragraph three and nine. Marjorie Rice agreed with the additions and so we're bringing it back to you for your signature. Davy Resource agrees with this particular contract. And so you've seen this contract two or three times.
Thank you. Comments, questions, Commissioner Jones?
I didn't see any problems with this.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, I, there was a comment in there about suits arising out of negligence of a third party not controlled by the contractor. We don't have any control over third parties either.
That would be a Marjorie Rice question.
I don't see Archie here.
Jeff Cockrell?
Mr. Cockrell can address that. Yep.
Well, I mean, and Kelly, let me know where I'm wrong because I wasn't the primary person working on this. But what the, the contractor is going to do, work on our property. And they're going to, they're going to look at things and things like that. They may have a subcontractor come in and do some work and that's fine. But it is a Parks Department and the public is still going to use Parks property. And if they go on the Parks property and having nothing to do with the contractor's work, there's an injury or something like that that leads to some kind of litigation, then the contractor shouldn't be responsible for that. And that's what the contract is saying is that, you know, if it's done, if there's an injury because of something they've done, great, you know, that they say if it's because of our negligence, we're going to take care of that. But if it's not, then, then, you know, then it's, it's somebody else that's on the hook. If we have a second contractor doing a totally separate project on the, on the Parks Department in the area, well, then their insurance and their contract insurance language should cover that. So generally, what I think, what this means is that we've opened this area for use. If someone gets injured and it's a result of negligence on the county's part or on a third party's part, they're not going to cover that. they're not going to cover that negligence. Now, we would probably look for the third party who did the negligence to cover whatever problems there are. But that's just clearly saying that they're not going to be on the hook for something they have no control.
Thank you.
Right, good, makes sense. All right, with that, and that was what I was going to ask, is to have you talk about what the changes were, but we've gone over that. Are there, is there any public comment, any members of the public who wish to speak on this agenda item? Again, go to participants and raise your hand.
There are no hands raised.
Okay, thank you so much. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on the amended agreement with Davy Resource Group?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Excellent, thank you so much. Thank you, Ms. Whitmer. All right, be well. No problem, be well. All right, we'll move on to the next item, please.
Move to approve Environmental Systems Research Institute, Inc. agreement. Fund name Cumulative Capital Development, fund number 1138-30041, in the amount of $20,820.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and we have Mr. Evans here. Good morning.
Good morning. Can you guys hear me okay? I ended up giving up my teleconferencing unit to the new boardroom at youth, the youth shelter. So I'm having to use an actual big boy fancy recording studio microphone. So do I sound like a professional voiceover artist?
You do, actually.
Right. Well, in a county where we need more licenses for our GIS work, I am coming before you, hoping that you will sign this contract so we can acquire two more licenses. These are going to be used by staff in the auditor's office. As Tron talked about earlier in the meeting, you know, the GIS work that we do throughout the county is becoming, you know, more and more important as time goes on. This was a natural progression anyway, but with the whole times COVID, we just really need more licenses that more people can, can do that. Now, anticipating that you all might have questions about what our staff does with these particular licenses, I brought along Tyler Caldwell from the surveyor's office to explain a little bit about what this program does. Tyler's fairly new to the county. This may be his first time addressing you guys. So Tyler, I give you the floor.
Mr. Caldwell, good morning.
Morning, Commissioners, how are you?
Well.
Good. So yeah, just to kind of piggyback off of what Eric had said, since becoming JS Coordinator, I've received several emails from JS users, county users, stating that all of the concurrent use licenses are in use. And we currently have eight concurrent use licenses. So, and Stephanie has come across this issue several times. So basically adding the two advanced single-use licenses for the auditor's office would free up the eight available concurrent use licenses, basically.
And that's, and that's for the property side of the auditor's office, right?
I believe so, yes.
Yeah, okay, excellent. Let's see if there are any comments or questions, Commissioner Jones?
That was one question I had.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, it's nice to hear how they will be meshing with other departments.
Absolutely, great. Let's see if there are any members of the public who wish to offer comments. Again, go to participants, and at the bottom of the screen, if you're on a standard PC, and raise your hand.
There are no hands raised.
All right, thank you, Ms. Dayton. And again, thank you, Mr. Caldwell. And Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on the Environmental Systems Research Institute agreement?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Agreement is approved, three to zero.
Thank you so much. We'll move on to the next item, please.
Move to approve BTEC LLC agreement for Emergency Operations Center. Fund name 2018 GEO Bond, fund number 4811-40015-0000, in the amount of $4,501.84.
Second.
Great, we have a motion and we have a second. Mr. Evans?
Yes, so this is an agreement with local company BTEC LLC. That, that name might ring a bell for you guys. We've been using them a lot for doing security throughout the county, swipe locks and surveillance cameras and whatnot. Fire alarm systems and, and fire suppression in general is actually BTEC's main focus. And so as we looked to get those systems for the new emergency operations center that we've built out at the highway garage, it was sort of a natural thing to get a bid from BTEC. Again, it's a locally owned company. We've done several projects, several fairly complicated projects with them, and they have just been great to work with. So I'm really excited that we can use them for fire alarm and security alarms.
Great, thank you so much. Comments or questions, Commissioner Jones?
No.
Commissioner Giffens?
I'm not quite sure where all the offices are out in the new setup, but is the Ways and Measures Office covered under this contract also?
I believe, um, yes. So I believe that his, actually Scott's actual office is in the building. His vehicle is in, obviously, a separate building that they built specifically for him and his, his rig. But I believe his administrative office is inside the EOC building. Allison is nodding yes.
He is.
So yeah, this would absolutely be covered by this. This is basically going to be, actually, I think this contract is just for the fire alarm system. I think the next contract is for the security system. But yeah, it's all.
Right. Right, excellent. All right, very good. All right, seeing that, no other questions or comments from the Commissioners? Is there any member of the public that wishes to offer a comment on this particular agenda item? Please go to participants, raise your hand.
There are no hands raised.
Thank you, Ms. Dayton. And with that, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on the agreement with BTEC for the Emergency Operations Center fire alarm system?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Excellent, thank you so much, and we'll move on to the next item.
Move to approve BTEC LLC agreement for Emergency Operations Center. Fund name 2018 GEO Bond, fund number 4811-40015-0000, in the amount of $999.
Second.
Great, we have a motion and we have a second, and we've already sort of broached this topic a bit. But Mr. Evans, do you have anything to add about the security system?
Again, it's the same company. I would tell you that, I just happened to think of this. BTEC helped us design the security for the ballot room at Election Central. And at some point, when we're not in a public meeting, remind me to give you the lowdown on that, because it is some Mission Impossible-type stuff. But anyway, yes, same company, local company, BTEC LLC. They're good, good guys.
Yeah, and somehow I'm imagining the Louvre and the red laser beams going in all kinds of directions from wall to ceiling. And, you know, and just, you know, the imagination runs wild.
It's very secure. And the guys at BTEC were very excited to do it.
Excellent. Comments, questions, Commissioner Jones?
I had to hear that both the voters, the ballots and emergency will be safe.
Commissioner Giffens?
Right, thanks for the extra information, yeah.
Excellent. All right, with that, let's see if there is any public comment on this item. Again, raise your hand using the participants tab and let us know.
There are no hands raised.
Great, thank you, Ms. Dayton. Sorry, I stepped on your toes there. With that, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on the BTEC LLC agreement for Emergency Operations Center security system?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Excellent, thank you so much. Next item, please.
Move to approve ratification of Smithville Digital Agreement. Fund name General, fund number 1,000, in the amount of $1,505 per month, with a $500 non-recurring charge.
Second.
Great, we have a motion and we have a second, Mr. Evans?
Yes, this is actually a contract that you guys signed a couple of weeks ago, right before I went on my vacation. And it is an agreement with another local company, Smithville Digital, to run a direct fiber internet circuit to the courthouse for a couple of different purposes. Obviously, it'll help the overall bandwidth for the operations that go on in the courthouse. But it's also in preparation for the rehab project that we're getting ready to get started in the Nat Hill Room.
Right, excellent. We just got to note that this is coming from cable franchise. Comments, questions, Commissioner Jones?
No.
Commissioner Giffens?
No, do we need to amend?
Yes, so fun, the fund number is 2502, and it's cable franchise. So I'm going to make a motion that we amend this item to reflect the correct fund number. Can I get a second?
Second.
Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on the amended motion?
Actually, if I could jump in, I think the amount that's on the agenda is incorrect. What, what's the monthly amount that you guys are voting on?
1,505.
No, the, hold on. The monthly amount is actually $1,050. There, that was a Scrivener's error.
Ah, okay, so I will add that to my motion to amend. So this is going to be a ratification of Smithville Digital Agreement. $1,050 monthly plus a $500 non-recurring initial fee from Cable Franchise 2502. Does my second approve of the revised amended amendment? Excellent. Looking in a mirror, in a mirror, in a mirror. All right, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on amending the motion?
Yes, Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is amended.
Thank you. And with that, Commissioner Jones? Do you have any comments or questions?
No.
Commissioner Giffens?
No, as I'm, as I'm looking at the, what's in our packet, it actually says 1,050 monthly. It was just what was on our agenda, though, yeah, incorrect. So thanks for catching that.
And, Mr. Evans, can you tell us a little bit about how the Nat U Hill remodel is going? I think something that the public should be aware of is that we're, because we're getting more attendees via Zoom than we had at our actual in-person meeting, that once we go back to the real world after COVID, that we will be incorporating Zoom into our regular meetings. So as part of our standard meeting, you'd be able to log in and participate online or in person. Can you give us an update on the Nat U Hill remodel?
Absolutely. It, it's quite an interesting project, really. We had actually talked about doing rehab in the Nat Hill Room long before the, the whole COVID thing, anyway. And so we had planned on doing that this year. Now, obviously, you know, our, our governing world changed dramatically with the lockdown, and the, the nature of our public meetings has dramatically changed. And so that added an interesting element to the project, because we have to design an actual in-person physical room that can act as a broadcast studio, an interactive broadcast studio. So we're not just pushing our signal out, we're receiving signal from the, you know, citizens who want to attend meetings virtually. So, so what I did, I drafted a fairly detailed scope of work that I wanted to see done. Obviously, I've got some background in audiovisual reinforcement throughout the years. And so I put together kind of a wish list of what I wanted to see in the room. That includes completely redoing, so, so the things that are going into the physical room itself, we're going to redo all of the view screens, we're going to redo the sound system. And we're, in so doing, going to make it a virtual Zoom room so that people, you know, we, on the monitors, we can have, you know, the person who is zooming in, you know, from home or wherever, and presenting to the Commissioners or to the Council. They, they can appear on one screen while they're, whatever exhibits they have, they can display on the other. There's numerous nice upgrades for what having a meeting in the physical room is going to be like at some point when we get to do that again. So what I did after drafting this, this scope of work document, I went out to try to find vendors that could do that kind of work. I got interest from four different companies. Two of them just felt the scope of work was too big for them. It was, you know, it's a complicated thing, because it's a historic room. There are acoustic properties to the room that have to be dealt with very carefully. And, and, and so the challenge is to produce a room where the people working in it can hear everything okay, but the broadcast from it is also clear. And so that eliminated some of the vendors. There are two left that are finishing their bids. We had hoped to get started a little bit earlier in the year, but right now we're actually using the Nat Hill Room as part of the election operation. So as soon as the election is over, I believe we are going to start physical work on this project. I will probably be coming to you with my recommendation on that, possibly next week or the week after.
Great, excellent. And we don't know when we're going to be back. So that's, that's always, that's an outstanding question, but we should be prepared to return as soon as we need to. And we may have to make do in the interim, but we appreciate all your hard work on that. It's going to be very exciting, a new layer of, you know, as ironic as it is, a new layer of transparency for Monroe County government. So we appreciate all the hard work on that. Excellent. With that, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on the amended motion to ratify the Smithville Digital Agreement?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Agreement is ratified, three to zero.
Right, thank you, Mr. Evans. We appreciate you and your staff, as always, for all their hard work. Thank you. Next item, please.
Move to approve Resolution 2020-44 regarding the approval of the issuance of Monroe County General Obligation Bonds. Fund name to be decided, fund number to be decided, in an amount not to exceed $3.1 million.
Second.
Great, we have a motion and we have a second. Mr. Cockrell?
Yes, good morning. I think all of you have gone through this process before, but I'll, I'll make sure the community is aware of it as well. We are, the county is looking to issue some bonds to, for capital projects. And the process for issuing those bonds is that it has to have a resolution by the county Commissioners, and then it has to go through the county council for, I think, two different ordinances, an appropriation ordinance and then a bond ordinance. And so before the county council can review those bond ordinances, And so before the county council can review those bond ordinances, the commissioners need to approve this resolution. So this is not the final step in the, in the, in, in the programs. With that being said, I think that the generally, the big question is always, what projects are you looking at? And Exhibit A has a list of those projects. I don't, I don't know if Angie wants to, to go through them or how you guys want to handle them, or I could just read off what's in there.
I, I have it on a PowerPoint, so I don't know if I could go ahead and, and show that. I'm gonna just take a take a chance here. Everybody see that?
Yes.
Excellent, okay. So this is the proposed project list. And there's been a change to this, so this has not quite been updated yet, but it's very close to what we're going to be, what we have on our list. So this is the total that we're seeking, which is 3 million, this is sort of the summary page, which outlines the key categories of bond expenses. And to get into a little detail, this relates to the highway department. We have a total of five trucks ready to work the snowplow routes, which it's hard to imagine snowplows, but and this is, the lease, the lease purchase agreement was over $731,000. That first lease payment has already been made. So that's the total that's remaining is the 447,380, which is going on the bond. Next, we have a number of other vehicles. Also for the highway department, I think my favorite is this 1986 tractor that we're going to be replacing. So fun to look at this. But anyway, so we, we are looking at replacing some older, non-functioning vehicles, the smaller type support vehicles. Things like the tractors with the, the mowers mounted on the side to mow the, the the county's roads that have the greenery that comes right up alongside the road. Small bucket truck, brush chipper, et cetera. So that total is We have three items related to Carsham Park totaling 335,000. There's an accessibility improvement to the trails from Carsham Park. There's the replacement of playground number one with new surface and components and an effort to reinstall and remodel what's called the Patriotic Corner, where the flags are. And that total again is 335,000. In the Justice Building, we have a replacement of core switches with, we currently have nine-year-old switches. That's a $150,000 expense for technical services. For the Sheriff's Department, we have 30 new mobile radios and 38 portable radios. And one is in vehicles, the other is what's actually carried on the person, on the deputy. And we have one narcotic analyzer which will ensure speed accuracy and the safety of the deputy. The total there is 362,658. This is the one amendment. We have fleet vehicle refresh at 115,000. And these again are all estimates that we provide for the public, but the bond itself, it's, it's more flexible. But the decision was made to pay for this, we're still going to get this van. The YSB needs a new passenger van with an ADA lift. We are still buying this, but we're going to use a different fund through Public Safety Lit. So we're going to have a little bit more money and flexibility with fleet and pool vehicles. And for those who have a very keen eye, you might notice that I chose an all-electric vehicle. Just as an example. Also, we're making huge changes to improve the office space. Highway Department is going to be moving from the shower, North Showers Building where they currently are to the highway garage. Now that we have a new building out there, they're going to move into the existing space. So, and there's going to be a cost to renovate and new furniture costs as well. And while we're at it, we're going to move the surveyor out of the attic of the Health Department Building, the Health Building, and move them to the showers building, it's, it's more accessible. And it, it makes sense in terms of the other departments that we have there, which includes building and planning. So that total renovation cost is estimated at 357,862. And lastly, we put some money aside for possible trail link projects. These are very short trail lengths. Likely, it's going to be Liberty Constitution Connection, which is on the west side, on the Liberty Drive area. So those are the projects. Questions or comments from my colleagues? Or Jeff, or Mr. Cockrell, did you have anything else you wanted to add perhaps?
I would just say that the reason we put 3.1 as a not-to-exceed amount is because there are some transaction costs associated with this. And so we wanted to make sure those were captured by, by the bond as well.
Excellent. Very good, yes, the administrative costs. Comments, questions, Commissioner Jones?
Just that apparently, the fund is actually the Juvenile Lit Special Services.
Yes, oh yes, thank you for that, yes, I misspoke, thank you for catching that, I appreciate that, thank you.
That's for the fleet vehicle for the Youth Services Building.
Yes, yeah, thank you for that correction, I appreciate that. Commissioner Giffens?
Also, that the narcotic analyzer is a portable one, that you all had to explain to me and what the benefit of, of it was. And I'm glad that we're, we're doing this, sounds like a step forward.
Yeah, absolutely. Excellent, Ms. Purdy, did you have anything you wanted to add?
I think you guys have got it all.
Okay, thank you. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Just go to Participants, raise your hand, let us know.
There are no hands raised.
Great, thank you Ms. Dayton. All right, and with that, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on Resolution 2020-44?
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Resolution is approved, three to zero.
Right, thank you so much, and thank you for introducing this item. Next item, please.
Move to approve an MOU with the City of Bloomington regarding community crossing grant application.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and before I turn it over to Ms. Ridge, I will note that you're, you have, you're celebrating today 33 years with the county. So you must have been born in the county, in the apartment, because so congratulations and thank you.
Thank you, thank you, it's, it's been a pleasure and you guys are always very supportive and it's obvious from your, your bond presentation a while ago of how much you support the Highway Department. And the guys at the garage really appreciate it, we've told them how, how much you have helped in the last year and continue to help. And they are very appreciative too, to have better equipment, safer equipment. So, yeah, I can't believe it's 33 years, but here we are, so thank you for that.
Excellent, so tell us about this item, please.
So we are preparing for our next round of community crossings applications. So we have chosen Corey Lane to be one of our projects. There's a piece of Corey Lane on the end of West Third Street that actually is within the city jurisdiction. So when we do the application, mapping-wise, we have to choose the whole road, which NDOT will discover it crosses a different government entity. So in the past, we've had to do an MOU with that adjoining government agency to be able to go ahead and go past that basically permission from the other government to let us go ahead and pave that portion. The City of Bloomington had done it for us on a piece of Arlington Road and a piece of Second Street two years ago. So it's, it's normal practice, it's just, it's better for the public than for us to have them stop paving, it might be 300 feet. And then, you know, like I said, the City of Bloomington did it for us for two roads, so we're basically continuing that cooperation with the City of Bloomington. So this will go with our application to NDOT for the grant.
Excellent, thank you so much. Comments, questions, Commissioner Jones?
No.
Commissioner Giffens?
No, I was in touch with Ms. Ridge about one of, one or two of these things, and she's helped me understand some of it, so thank you.
Excellent. And this is just for the application process, Ms. Ridge. So obviously, this is part of that application. And we have the next item as well. Are these the two items that are on the application? Have you applied for other projects? Can you tell us about it?
So actually, this is one of the roads that we have chosen. We're actually doing our cost estimates right now because we had previously received amount from the last call for projects. So I believe there's about 550,000 still left that we could qualify for, so we're trying to reach that top dollar. So we have also chosen Ratliff Road from Hart Street out to Loudon Road, Loudon Road, which is a big, big project. A piece of Old 37 North on the north end that we're looking at. The Corey Lane, and there's another one, and I'm drawing a blank. But I, you, you will get a list of those before I submit those next week because you will sign a financial commitment letter on our behalf for our local match. But we're still finalizing the list, but these were two that we know we were including definitely. We just have to see how the engineer estimate cost on what we can submit, but these two are at the top of our list.
Excellent, thank you so much. And with that, let's see if there's any public comment on this item, just go to Participants and raise your hand.
There are no hands raised.
Okay, thank you Ms. Dayton. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on the motion to approve the MOU with the City of Bloomington regarding community crossing grant application?
Yes, Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you so much, next item, please.
Move to approve an MOU with the Town of Elletsville regarding community crossing grant application.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, Ms. Ridge.
So this MOU is is basically the same thing, but with the Town of Elletsville. There's some pieces of Ratliff Road that has been annexed by the Town of Elletsville. So we would be including that portion into our grant application. And I did want to add on the City of Bloomington application that it goes to the Public Works Board on Tuesday for final, for final approval. And then also, I will attend the Town of Elletsville Council Meeting on Monday evening. If it's approved today, then we'll move it to those, those next steps. But basically, it's the same type of situation. This is a road that is in dire need of paving, drainage work. So this is one of the top roads that we would like to submit. It's actually about one point, a little over a mile and a half of a roadway, so it'll be an expensive one, but very much needed.
Thank you, comments, questions, Commissioner Jones?
No.
Commissioner Giffens?
No, I, I really applaud you for doing all this advanced work to make it go smoothly at the application process.
Thank you, they started this in 2016, so you kind of start to work out the kinks and try and stay a little bit ahead of the game to get the MOUs done and try and meet the deadline. They only gave us basically about 30 days to put the application together. We didn't think they were actually going to do one until January, but we've been rushing around and we don't want to miss the opportunity to get these paving projects in, so.
Yeah, and, and I would, and I would say a big amen on getting the drainage fixed in this particular stretch of roadway.
That's our goal, you know, it, I think it's taken us a little bit longer to do some of the paving projects, but we have a kind of a process in plan now. Basically, we do the ditching, we replace any pipe that is needed on the roadway or in a installation of a new pipe. So we address all the drainage work before we go in to pave it. It might take a little, like I said, a little bit longer to do it, but I feel that we have a system now that it's a process that works and it, and protects the longevity of the road, so.
Absolutely, perfect, thank you so much. Let's go and see if any members of the public have any comment to make on this particular agenda item.
There are no hands raised.
All right, thank you Ms. Dayton. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on the MOU with the Town of Elletsville regarding community crossing grant application?
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, congratulations again.
Thanks.
All right, we'll go on to the next item, please.
Move to approve PJJ LED LLC for Aczenic UV Disinfection Solutions. Fund name: Rainy Day and Cumulative Capital. Fund number: 1186-36999-000 in the amount of $229,128.
Second.
Right, we have a motion and we have a second, I'll start with Ms. Purdy talking about this.
Yes, good morning Commissioners. You know, as everybody is quite aware, COVID-19 has affected everybody in some form or another, and in addition to your concerns for our community as a whole, you've also been really concerned with improving the safety of all Monroe County Government employees and the visiting public in our buildings. This contract provides UV air disinfection systems and air surface high-powered UV C light disinfection mobile units. I also want to add, the list of buildings in the agenda is not complete as we have in fact addressed all of our county buildings with the exception, and that's been currently due to the construction and proposed movement of the surveyor, the Health Department, so we might be coming back with an addendum for the Health Department in the future. But I want to turn this over now to Mr. Bill Mellon to discuss this product, the assessment process that we did for our buildings, and he can answer any questions you guys might have.
Excellent, Mr. Mellon, welcome.
Yes.
Oh, here we go. My video is not working, sorry, maybe it is. Anyway, I'll go forward. First, I'd like to second Penny Cottles' comment about her SMASH acronym because that's probably the most important thing to keep everybody safe. What we're doing with UV disinfection for, for the air and surfaces is to address COVID. We looked at about probably 600 spaces in the county and tried to prioritize risk. And we prioritized risk in a couple of different ways. One being close quarters issues where there's no alternative. And there are a couple detective interview rooms that are like that, there are some visitor rooms at the YSB. There's some high-volume, public, high-density rooms. The Commissioner's Meeting Room, a large room at YSB, the Stride Main Recreation and large room at YSB, the Stride Main Recreation Center there, a courtroom waiting area, voter where you have a large amount of people in high density. And then you have high-use, high-density rooms like the courtrooms and conference rooms across the county. So we went through a priority of all these spaces, and what we're addressing then is air disinfection for the high-use spaces where it's possible to do that with a ceiling-mounted unit. There are a couple very large spaces that we're going to use with a standalone unit. One is the large Commissioner's Room, the other is at YSB, and the other is at Stride. And then we have a handful of the mobile units that are already being used currently by the Sheriff's Department at the jail, and we're going to use that to disinfect bathrooms and surface areas to augment the existing cleaning and chemical disinfection. But I think the layering of this addresses COVID, and the good thing moving forward is that it addresses things like, you know, flu and pneumonia, and from a surface point of view, things like, you know, MRSA and hepatitis. And it puts you in a position, if something else comes forward, you're already set. So there's a layering of benefits for the county.
Right, thank you, thank you so much. Let's go, first, Ms. Purdy, did you have anything else to add?
No, I do not.
Thank you. So go to Commissioner Jones for comments, questions?
This is really a wonderful thing. It's going to do a whole lot to protect our employees and the public and just keep everyone healthier and safer.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, when I read through all this, I thought, oh, how do I get one of these for my home? It just looks like it, because it addresses mold and other things as well, this is important. And I'm really glad that we went ahead and added the extra units for the EOC and Adult Services Protection Office and for the Highway Garage Training Room. So thank you, Ms. Purdy, for doing that.
Thank you for bringing that to my attention. Totally forgot about the fact that we were most likely moving our Highway Department into that area. It was like, oh, okay. So, no, thank you very much for bringing that to my attention.
So how many total units are we ordering?
120 of the air disinfection units that we're going to put in the ceiling. They're all going in the ceiling except one in the Currie atrium. We're actually going to put that in a wall there. But, yeah, 120 units, three of the large space freestanding air disinfection units, and then four of the mobile units.
Excellent, thank you so much. And when can we expect to receive these items?
We have a number of these things already on order. I have to check where we are on status of orders coming in. Typical lead time is four to five weeks, but I'll get back with Angie on where we are with orders already coming. We may be able to beat that timeframe.
Okay. And is it a complicated process to install the ceiling or that wall unit that you mentioned? Is that a complicated process?
No, it's actually pretty simple. What we, in most of the cases, you already have hung ceilings, and these units are made to sit in a hung ceiling. And we just wire it, we will wire it to the existing lighting in the ceiling. So there's not a lot of cabling necessary. Basically, you turn the lights on in the morning, and your air is being disinfected at the same time. So, no, it's pretty straightforward.
Excellent, great, thank you for answering those questions. And we're, Ms. Purdy, we're looking at using CARES or FEMA money, right? That's why we're using these funds, to clarify for the public.
Yes, yes, we will submit for reimbursement to FEMA initially, and then the 25%, we intend to submit to CARES.
Perfect, great, thank you so much. All right, with that, let's see if there's any public comment on this item.
There are no hands raised.
Thank you, Ms. Dayton. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the TJJ LED LLC Disinfection Solutions Purchase Agreement?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mellon, and thank you, Ms. Purdy, for working on this. We appreciate you. Excellent.
Thank you very much.
Looking forward to having this installed. All right, so we don't have any appointments today, but I will note that we are going to be making board and commissioner appointments soon. And we encourage you to take a look at the list of boards and commissions and consider how you can offer your expertise, experience, time, and commitment to help Monroe County government get even better. And please apply as soon as possible. We are, voter registration is closed as of Monday, but I will note that in-person voting has started at 401 West 7th at Election Central. The hours are available at monroecountyvoters.us. And you are welcome to apply to receive a mail-in early ballot, but that application is due by the 22nd. Ms. Giffens, did you have something you wanted to share on this account?
Yes, first of all, I want to thank everybody that's been wearing masks. I've been seeing things on social media that indicates in other locations, folks aren't doing that. But here in Monroe County, we're taking care of each other, which is amazing that that's happening. Yesterday, first day of early voting, we had 899 people vote here in Monroe County in person, and they have sent out 12,482 absentee ballots. Those are from individual requests that have gone in. They don't have a count yet of what else come back, but they're working hard. They have to verify signatures on the requests and signatures on the ballots as they come back, or the envelopes as they come back in. So they're working hard, very, very hard to get all this done. And Karen Wheeler and her staff have really been doing just a Herculean job. And so I want to give a shout out to them and the wonderful job they're doing.
Yeah, the staff at Election Central is, at this point, super, super busy, and they will be until the ballots are counted and certified. So they've got a road ahead of them, and so be patient, be kind, and thank you to them for all their help. And we appreciate everyone in the community that stepped up to help either in early voting or at the polling places on Election Day. That's also going to be an important part of making our democracy run smoothly. Just a note for everyone that there was a report done last week in the Washington Post where they studied late utility bills in Indiana and found 112,000 households were behind in their utility bills. I don't think that was a comprehensive look, I think that was just one utility company. But given that economic troubles continue because of COVID, if every county resident has a township, lives in a township and has a township trustee, and if you are struggling to pay for shelter and utilities and the necessities of life, please contact your township trustee as soon as possible. They have a lot of resources that they can offer you. But also, we on the board worked with the county council to develop the Township Assistance Fund. So townships have additional funding available to them to ensure that people don't face evictions or utility shut-offs during this time. So this is something that we've done to help all county residents, whether you live in the city or Town of Elletsville or Town of Steinsville, it doesn't matter. Every county resident is eligible. If you're struggling to pay your bills, please reach out to your township. And once we had provided nearly $400,000 in grants, not loans, to county businesses and social service agencies, we then turned to using CARES funding. And just an update, as of last Thursday, we have granted an additional $128,119 to county businesses and social service organizations to ensure that we have a vibrant economy once the COVID pandemic is over. We can only dream of that day. And an additional $36,367 was granted to some of the taxing units, including the library, who needed some CARES funding. So if you are a business anywhere in the county, social service organization, please apply before November 30th for reimbursement from the county's CARES fund for any COVID-related expense, non-payroll, that you have not already been compensated for or has not already been addressed by a grant or a loan. But if you have questions, you can go to that form, and you will see an email address for those questions that you may have. So please apply. We want to make sure that we emerge from this as strong as when this began. Also a note, again, as Ms. Caudill pointed out, we have to be really super careful with holidays coming up, and the first one on the docket, of course, is Halloween. The board has decided to set the trick-or-treat hours for 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM on October 31st, but please utilize the CDC guidelines, which I know that Allison and Kate are already putting online for us, to ensure that this is a safe Halloween. And I would just say that we encourage children to dress up as their favorite masked hero, who could be a first responder, a nurse, a doctor, a worker at a hospital, any healthcare worker, because there are heroes. They don't wear a cape, but they do wear a mask, and that would be a perfect opportunity to wear the appropriate kind of mask for Halloween. So let me see if my colleagues have anything else to add.
I believe that we were talking about continuing the meeting on Friday?
Yes. Yeah, anything else though, before we do that?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So with that, our meeting is continued until noon on Friday, so TSD, please be aware of that. And we will go ahead and continue the meeting at that point. So with that, we are continued. Thank you, everyone, be well.